Good afternoon. We're going to call the Monday, June 9th Davidson County Commissioner Meeting to Order. The invocation and pledge of allegiance will be by Commissioner Shale.
Those who'd like to join me, our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you, Father, for this opportunity to come together as a free people. Father, forgive us when all we see around us is the ugliness that we ourselves have created. Help us, Father, to remember and to see all the beauty that you have put before us. And why, when we look into the eyes of our children, we can see, Father, the purpose and the reason for the fight. Thank you, Father, for all that you have done for us. I pray, Father, that you'll lead us with your guidance, your wisdom, and your strength. For it is in Jesus' precious name I pray. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Shale. Commissioner McClure, if you'd like to recognize the veterans, please.
I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize any of the veterans that are with us today. Would you raise your hand? Have you gotten a lapel pin, ma'am?
Yes.
You have, okay. Well, we appreciate that.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, veterans, for your service. All right. Register for public address. If you wish to speak at public address, do so. Sign up here now. If you're here for the public hearing on the rezoning, wait till we open the public hearing on that. So that'll be later on in the meeting. Can I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Mazzell and Commissioner Elliott?
They're moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Adoption of the agenda due to the anticipated length of the public hearing. I'm asking that they be moved to the following, to follow the deliberation. Are there any other additions to the agenda?
Sir.
Here, none. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Public address, please. Now, I think there's a couple of names on here that's about the rezoning. So y'all can come up later if that's okay. So Kevin Isley will call you up later. Lexington City Schools, Dan Behringer?
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening, Chair Yates, Vice Chair Watford, commissioners and community members. Every morning, our bus drivers greet children with a smile, sometimes calming a nervous kindergartner or first grader, and always making families feel confident their children are safe. They're often the first and last school officials that our students see each day, and their care and consistency set the tone for success each day. Reliable transportation is more than just a service. It is a promise to our families and a critical part of our students' educational experience. We continue to struggle retaining drivers as some leave for better-paying jobs in nearby districts or pursue opportunities in the private sector. When this happens, we must combine routes, delay pickups, all of these disruptions, you know, put families on notice, and can affect their confidence in our schools. And in today's school choice environment, reliability can influence a family's decision to stay or to look elsewhere. The proposal before you tonight includes increasing the classified staff supplement from two to three percent, with this increase specifically targeted to support those earning less than $40,000 annually. Retaining our bus drivers and other valued classified staff is more important than ever. This supplement is essential to keeping these skilled professionals who ensure our schools run smoothly and safely every day. We're deeply grateful of the board's verbal support shared on June the 2nd and for the continued partnership that we are building. Together, we can maintain a transportation system that ensures safety, reliability, and trust for our students and our families. I respectfully urge you to approve this request tonight and help us to keep our dedicated transportation team strong and continue delivering the dependable service that our community deserves. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your leadership and your commitment to the safety and success of our students.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate you. Nakia Hardy. How are you this afternoon, Nakia?
I'm great.
Good to see you.
It's a great day to be a Yellow Jack.
That's right. That's right. Always is. Good to see you.
Good evening, Chair Yates, Vice Chair Watford, and our commissioners. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. On behalf of Lexington City Schools, our Board of Education, with our chair, Mr. Brent Wall, who is here, as well as one of our board members, Ms. Deborah Verdel, our students, our families, and our dedicated professionals who serve them, I want to express my sincere appreciation for your thoughtful consideration of our budget request. At your June 5th meeting, we were especially encouraged by the thoughtful engagement from this board. Vice Chair Watford's reflections on her time working in and retiring from a school system as a teacher were deeply appreciated and served as a reminder of the shared purpose that connects us all, supporting students and the professionals who serve them. Her words, along with the questions and insights shared by others, reflected a genuine spirit of partnership and care for our schools, our staff, and our students. As part of our effort to retain and support our staff, we have proposed the increase for our teacher supplement from eight to 8.75% and classified supplement from two to three percent. Please note the classified staff is focused on those employees earning less than $40,000 annually, further demonstrating our commitment to recognizing the essential contributions of those who support our students every day, from bus drivers to instructional assistants, school nutrition, and maintenance staff. A vote of yes tonight is more than just simply a budget decision. It's a resounding declaration that you value the people who make education possible. It signals to our teachers and staff that their hard work, dedication, and impact on student lives matter. It affirms that our community believes in rewarding excellence and building a stronger future together. A vote of yes tonight is an investment in the stability, safety, and student success for Lexington City Schools. It means students will continue to be greeted each morning by bus drivers who they know and trust, supported by instructional assistants who care deeply for them, and nourished by our school nutrition staff who treat them like one of their very own. A vote of yes tonight honors the reality that our employees are not just simply workers. They are the backbone of our school system. They are the difference makers, the encouragers, the steady hands who keep our schools running and our students thriving every single day. We understand that there are many priorities in front of you that you must balance, and we are grateful for your consideration of this investment in our people. Lexington City Schools remains committed to transparency, fiscal responsibility, and open communication. More importantly, we remain committed to strengthening our partnership with this board because when we work together, our students, our families, and the entire Davidson County community all benefit. I respectfully urge and encourage you to vote yes tonight for your budget so that we can continue supporting the dedicated professionals who make a real difference in the lives of our students and uplift our community every day. Thank you for your time, your leadership, and your continued support of Lexington City Schools and the Davidson County community.
Thank you, Nakia. Thank you very much. Angela Kleiner, we will hear you later in the rezoning part. Sonya Myers?
Good evening. My name is Santa Myers, and most of you know me as I've been going through things with DSS. But tonight, I'm here on behalf of the officers in our county. Last meeting I watched was very embarrassing to be a Davidson County resident. I didn't grow up here. I grew up in one of the most dangerous counties, which is Durham County. But from that, from the drama, from the Board of Education to the overturning DSS, and now the officers having to fight to get the raise that they are well-deserved and made a mockery of whenever you compare jobs to theirs is embarrassing. My husband worked for 911 for 15 years and was also a volunteer firefighter for 20-plus years and a paid firefighter for 15. I would never compare my job in the medical field that I worked for 25 years to his job. These men and women go out every day and fight for you and me and will go out in front of gunfire, domestic violence, child abuse, anything unimaginable and deserve respect. And for their salaries to be brought up for everyone for them to see and everyone for them to hear is unconstitutional. Even whenever one asked that he was not here to discuss that, it was still brought up. I know I'm a good Christian woman, and things don't change in this county. It's going to go to hell in a handbasket. And we're going to be able, and we're not going to be able to get it back. It's the people in this county that are watching you, listening to you, seeing your posts that you put on Facebook. They're going to be the ones that vote you in or don't vote you in at the next vote. It starts with you. Which one of you are going to be the change in this county? Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Thank you very much. Barry Woodward? I'm sorry?
Res zoning.
He's basically saying zoning.
Res zoning, okay. And Mike Burns is rezoning, so, okay. Public address is over. We'll move on to the agenda, consent agenda. Does anybody wishing to pull anything up the consent agenda? Here, none. I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. Item number 9A, deliberation. Resolution regarding the importance of sales tax. Casey?
I think Mr. Shale, was you on this one?
Yes.
I'm going to turn it over to him. This is related to the proposal to take sales tax from the counties, basically, to use to cover the costs of the 911.
We're in unison with some of the other counties in the state. The North Carolina General Assembly has always given us, the local boards, whether it be city or counties, the ability to utilize the sales taxes for education and certain specifics that make it, enable us to run the county smoothly. Where there's been some talk in Raleigh about taking that away from the counties, which is very, is something we should all be very, be concerned with. And I'm going to make this brief, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to read the, just a little portion here of what we're wanting to do. Is that the resolution is in support of the county's ability to utilize those funds the way they always have. Be further resolved that the board respectfully urges the North Carolina General Assembly to preserve and protect these vital local revenue sources to ensure counties can continue to meet the growing needs of their residents. A lot of those funds being utilized for education. Be it finally resolved that copies of this resolution be shared with the members of the North Carolina General Assembly, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and other appropriate stakeholders. Adopted this 9th day of June 2025. And with that, I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Any other discussion? Here, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries?
Thank you.
All right, Casey. Item 9B, please. One needs to go to Debbie.
Yes, sir, please.
So for those of you that were here Thursday, and for the benefit of Mr. Commissioner McClure, who was not, just real quickly, I'll walk back through this, Mr. Chairman. We've only got two substantive dollar changes for the budget, and it's not in the general fund. It's ones in the 911 fund where the state has provided us with our allocation from the telephone proceeds, as you guys are aware of, dropped it by $462, offset by a $66,120 increase in the airport revenues, which are just basically budgeting revenues for the leases and the fuel hangers that they already collect anyway. In other words, it's matching the budget reality. There is no general fund changes at this time. That's what this first sheet's all about in the Carolina Blue. It just shows you what the numbers would look like. You have behind that, basically what staff's asking for approval this evening, is essentially the ordinance. So you have a fresh ordinance that's called adopted as opposed to proposed, but it incorporates the $462 and the airport changes. The last piece that we, if I could, whoever makes a motion this evening can incorporate is the GIS fee changes that were nominal, where we were reducing them down because we had some duplicate fees going on there. And then the last pieces are, and thanks to Dr. Hardy this afternoon, she brought me signed copies for the chairman to sign. I've got all three MOUs from each of the school systems now with signatures from their chair, and I think we got two for our EWE sign, so Lexington will be the last one. Lexington was the change, if you remember from Thursday, to include the certified folks that they spoke of today.
In case, I got the chair to sign that a little while ago.
Okay.
So if it's approved, I'll get Dr. Hardy to get it.
So basically, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have, is what I'll call the package of budget stuff to approve, if I can turn it over to you.
All right. There's the budget. Budget. Can I have a motion to approve?
Discussion.
All right.
Wanted to ask, I'll get it all out. So far as the people who are spending time in our guest jail, are we operating on a three-person jail or a one-person jail? When I'm talking about one, I'm talking about one people. In other words, if we put 100,000 people, 100 people in there or 300?
For the capital plan right now has included the dollars of which the jail committee just saw last Thursday a proposal for, again, that needs to come to this full board. Because remember how the capital plan works? It's simply a plan. Everything's going to have to come back to this board to get approved at some point in time, meaning funding appropriations, contracts, et cetera. The plan right now is about $65 million with a core part of that facility being to accommodate 600-plus inmates, with the ability right now to add pods up to get it up to a 400-bed facility, essentially. I think it's more like 388 or 389, but I'm rounding to four because I can remember 400 or even number in my head. With the ability on the bank property that we just acquired to actually do 188-bed Level 1 and then another 188-bed Level 2 in the future. Yes, that will be future cost. But for right now, you've got the bank property as the future in this plan at 65. But get the core sized for 600, and I think that's part of what the committee talked about last Thursday with Mosley and sheriff staff, is some tweaks to how to make sure we get that core accommodated correctly. When I say core, I mean kitchen, medical, laundry, and I guess that's about it. So picking up a net 100 to going from three to four with this plan, with the ability to double stack another 188 times two.
When we looked at the jail plans initially, we looked at expanding it to 300 additional. Not in the future, not down the street, but just doing it now. It's my, I believe that it's not at 300 now, it's at 100. So far as, because when we were looking at, when we were looking at the first jail budget, we were looking at considerably more money than $65,000.
I'm not sure about the 100. Maybe you're talking about the growth. So we've got a 297-bed facility now, and I'm rounding to 300, again, to keep it even where everybody can stay with me. We're looking to go to four with a core that can accommodate six.
Let me finish, because I interrupted. I'm apologizing for doing that. But we had statistics that came to us, that we saw for the number of people that we had in the jail for every month. And they were all over 300, every one of them, for the last year. And there was an inspection report in there for last year that says that, I mean, for the last month, that says we exceeded that amount that we had, about 22. Now, it's my, it's my understanding that if you can't take care of the people that is in your unit or your jail, that you have to pay money out someplace else. Is that correct?
You have to either do that or work with the court system to remove some folks. And I think as of Thursday, if I remember, Major Louis was here. We were at 270 and some change. So we had come down again even from that report. That number moves. It fluctuates. So if you remember when this thing started, it's been almost eight So if you remember when this thing started, it's been almost eight years ago. We, when we started doing a six-hundred-and-twenty-five-bed design, it was fifty-five million dollars, which at the time we thought was a lot of money. And about that time we get ready to design that building, um, the post office folks who are, let's just call it the federal government, decided that they were not going to move from that location, that they were going to stay, irregardless of what their agreement said. So they chose to stay, and we all knew that fighting the federal government on this issue was probably going to be a few, uh, exercise in futility. And it was, it's a no-win situation. So we waited, COVID come and left, that same fifty-five million dollars, six-hundred-and-twenty-five-bed facility cost ninety-five million dollars. There was not an appetite on this board that I saw to spend ninety-five million dollars, or at the jail committee, to spend ninety-five million dollars. So we started to come up with what we'll call alternate plans. Could we do anything to get that cost down? The first option was build it like you were at ninety-five, but don't build the top floor, because again, we didn't own the bank property at that time. So build the top floor and just shell it with air, because these pods come in prefab where you can stick them in, slot them in. In other words, we could do that later, but at least have the building ready. That dropped it down to about eighty-two million. Still a good chunk from ninety-five, what is that, thirteen million dollars, but again, not a number that I got directed from this board that was willing to be had. The second conversation after that was, well, there is no other choice at this time. Again, we're all waiting at, during that time of these conversations, we're still waiting on the post office. At that point, they had not burnt ground on a new site, there was no, nothing that indicated to me that they were leaving anytime soon. As a matter of fact, they sent us stuff every month saying, please renovate this building on your dime, because we're planning on staying. And so we, we start talking about options, maybe to move off-site, build what they used to, what we used to refer to in Wake County as an annex. Not ideal, having two facilities, two different laundries, two different medicals, two different of everything, and transporting prisoners. But at that time, it was going to appear as if this may be the only option. Um, there was, we couldn't kind of work that plan into a place where we could feel like that cost was gonna be any better than where we were. And then I think Mosley came up with an idea of, okay, we've taken a, we've taken a look at the core, we've taken a look at the administration, uh, offices that were being proposed in the original design, and we figured out a way to right-size it down some. Maybe not have them all, number one, quantity, and size might can be reduced, still fit in, we think, to a core that it could accommodate six hundred-plus, and then you get some net result beds, because we do need to pick up some. But then the bank property came open and available, and that's when we bought that, and that opens up the future. Again, that will be future cost for some board to have to take on. Um, and staffing, staffing also became a key issue in this conversation, because at the six-hundred-bed facility plan, we were going to need, you know, upwards of seventy or eighty people or almost a hundred people. You count that recurring cost with medical, laundry, additional meals, I mean, you could be pushing six, seven, eight million dollars in recurring funds a year that need to be had to operate such a facility. The second piece of that conversation came as where would we even find that many people to work in such a facility? Forsyth County can't do it now, so that's why they don't rent out the top of their facility, because they don't, they won't let you buy a bed to put your prisoner in, essentially because they can't staff it. And so that became an eye-opener as well, is like, wow, the six-hundred-bed option's going to be a cost in the construction, but it's also gonna be a cost to operate. This new option doesn't take, at least to get it off the ground for the initial hundred-bed, as many officers, somewhere in the range of ten, fifteen, twenty. Something that's more doable for the county to try to find. Even though we're having recruitment issues now, and everyone is, um, this is a more palpable number, at least it's not astronomical. So it's something we can probably work toward, and then the, again, the bank property was the key. We bought it, this ain't even been three months ago. And so without that, I think we really were gonna be landlocked and have a problem. Since then, the post office has broke ground on the site, moved on, and they're, we're by all accounts moving out in October. And so I think that just kind of magically opened the skies up to where that plan now is something that is at least to the point to where I think the jail committee heard it last Thursday, and correct me if I'm wrong, the members, if I'm putting words in your mouth, now we're ready to bring this to a Thursday morning meeting. As a matter of fact, I think that's what was said at that committee meeting, the rest of this board needs to hear this plan. This, the one I'm talking about now, in-depth with the engineers. Um, we're finally at a place where we've landed on, because from here, I'm not sure what we do if it's not that plan.
My question, I guess, is, yes, this month that comes up, are we twenty-two people over every month? How do we do with that?
That would probably be better answered by some of the jail's administration staff, but in a short answer is, if you're over, you're gonna get told to figure, if it's, especially if you get caught on a day where the jail inspector comes from the state, you're gonna get told either, yes, find a place to put them, either, i.e., call another county, call somebody to make arrangements. But again, working with the court system, working with the DA's office, working with Superior Court to do the dockets where they know they can run folks through a little bit better, they can unclog some things. You also get this challenge of picking up the phone, calling the state, where we're holding twenty of their folks for transport purposes. And it's because their jail facilities are understaffed or they can't find places to put them. So we end up getting caught in that crossfire as well, where they, we're holding twenty of their, so if you're twenty-two over, twenty of them could be state folks that we're holding that need to be transported somewhere else. They're simply not our prisoners. And so the jail, the state uses our, all counties jails as holding spots or repositories, because they have their own facility and staffing challenges. And so that, sometimes it's as simple as that, and I think the jail staff do call and their, their counterparts at the state and say, hey, you know, can we make this a little, happen a little bit quicker? Uh, because we're at three-twenty-two, and we've been told by the state jail inspector, we gotta get twenty rolling, or we're holding twenty of yours. So Commissioner McCleod, it's a, it's a, it's a dance there of a variety of issues that you can do to try to work it down, but you're going to get, you have to get it down, right? And if it goes really above and beyond that, gets to four hundred, the jail inspector's gonna have really low tolerance. And we had that happen twenty-eighteen and nineteen. We had several months where it averaged three-fifty, three-sixty, and that's how this whole conversation of building the court complex and the jail came to be. It was in twenty-eighteen, which is, like I said, eight years ago almost now.
Yeah. I was on the committee that built the first one. What was it, what year was that?
Two thousand.
And one of the things we didn't do was we didn't put enough jails in that facility. Hence, we're up against it again, and we're trying to do the same thing. And I don't see in building a facility, jail facility, that is already have more people in it than we have room for with the addition. It's just, I think it's short, short-sighted.
Just, may I say something?
Yeah.
In defense of the commissioner, of, of the commissioners that were on, when they chose that, that third floor at the old jail, they were, they were supposed to be able to add jails to that. Then they changed the code, that wasn't the commissioner's fault, they changed the code so they couldn't add on. If you wanna know the ultimate truth about why your jails are overcrowded, is because the state has put their people that's supposed to be serving time in our jails for you, the taxpayers, to have to fund. That's why the jails are overcrowded, they need to build more prisons, that's what they need to do. And take these people out of these jails and put them where they used to put them. Instead of coddling these people, they need to do something with them and quit putting it on the back of the local taxpayers. That's exactly what the problem is. And until that's finished, they'll just keep adding to it. That's sort of like this resolution, they'll keep adding to it, and it's, it's not right. It's not right. Now, I think this is a new plan, what they're talking about, Fred, as far as, uh, adding that extra floor airspace, as you called it, where they can add ju- things to it. And I think that will work out okay, we may have to move to it faster than anticipated eventually, but it's not the commissioner's fault at that time that built that two-thousand jail, because it wasn't, they didn't know that the state was gonna change the zone, and they couldn't utilize that space for what they were needed to, what they had planned it for. I just think the people need to know that.
Well, you're correct, and that's exactly what happened, was we did not get to be, to use the second floor. But it's just like circumstances like that that dictate that we build what we should have rather than what we might have. And if we get, if we get down, down the road, I just don't see building a, a jail that has slated to, to have one more unit instead of the three more units, when we're already have, uh, as a regular amount over three hundred. Okay, I see that.
Alright, any other discussion?
Yes.
Alright.
Got none of it. Um, this is, this is kind of difficult for me, because I coached gym, um, basketball for fifteen years. But we have never, since I have been here twenty-four or five years, we have never, ever had a project of this magnitude that we did not give it time to look at. When they brought this in, it was brought in one day, one year, does this? I don't know how you're gonna do fifteen million dollars and not have an impact on somebody. You figure that out, I'd like to know. We didn't even look at a different site. We just took one site, and that's what we went with. We didn't go to see if there was one in Midwell or Midwell, Wake, well, whatever. We just didn't see. And, and every time that we have been on a school construction, um, committee, we have looked at several sites and tried to pick out the best site that provided, uh, what they needed. The other, my other hesitation is that, and this may be a, a co-widens, but it may not. It's, uh, the jail went from eighty-three million or ninety million down to sixty-five thousand about the same time as the sport flex went to sixty-five million. So I don't know whether that anything doing it or not, maybe not. But I don't think that we have done the work that we needed to do to have this facility. I really don't think that, um, I don't think that, that we would be cited as being example in spending sixty-five million dollars. The other thing about the sixty-five, I have never, in my, in my career, known of anybody who could come up with sixty-five million dollars, I dare. But that's what we did. And you can say that it's not gonna impact anything. Believe it. I don't have any clue how that's gonna happen. And those are my concerns about this sport flex. Not that I don't like sport, I coached it, but it's in place at the time. Thank you.
Casey, you wanna follow up or? Please, please keep the applause down, please. We understand y'all here in opposition, we fixing to hear you in, in just a second. Uh, would you like to follow up with some of that, because I know we did look at several sites, and I know, but I, I don't know if, um...
There were two or three options, um, most of them were down Highway Eight. Um, and as far as the funding goes, um, I do, I do appreciate the, the, uh, the credit for being able to do things that were miraculous, that hadn't been seen in twenty years, but it was, it was actually very easy. Um, we did a revow in twenty-twenty-two, and as you know.
We haven't even completed that, so we don't know what that's gonna be.
Yeah, it's, it's, it was done in twenty-twenty-two, we're doing one now for twenty-twenty-six.
Thanks.
So the one in twenty-two comes and goes, because we don't know, at that time, we thought, you know, we got told by the state, everybody wants to go to four-year revow. By law in North Carolina, you have to do a revow every eight years, no matter what. We had always done ours on an eight-year cycle, um, they were pressing hard for everybody to do it within four. We told them that's probably not gonna happen here, we chose six. And six happened to land from our last one we did and be the twenty-twenty-one, two calendar year. Um,
We actually had two re-dos in four years in this county.
We're, we're having one now, right, right.
Had one in the past.
We've only had, we had one in twenty-sixteen and one in twenty-twenty-two, and we're having one in twenty-twenty-six.
That's, that's a revow.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so how this works is, is they, they press everybody to try to get to four. We push back and say, probably can't happen, we don't have the staff and the ability to turn it around that quickly. Um, they give us the reprieve to do it in six years, because we see the housing market starting to move in twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, everybody did. Um, what we didn't count on, like a lot of jurisdictions, if you pull up their sales ratios, is the housing market continuing to ascend past what we did. And so we, we got to a place where the housing market continued beyond values of where we called it at in twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. And so we did a revow, we did not change the tax rate, because we're using funds to do big capital projects, i.e. the jail. A lot of that sixty-five, probably half of it's gonna be cash to put down on, simply like a house, you would buy a house.
I understand what you're saying.
And the ability to deal with schools, put down some, we talked about this when I gave everybody the budget, the ability to put back cash to help with the, the school districts, all three of them. Um, and I'd like to get involved in that conversation this summer with those funds. So that was one way to, to get the cash got brought up, and you move those cash to capital reserve, and you get some of these projects on the list. What the board chooses to do with that cash, my job is to come up with a plan to fund it. This board chooses how they wanna spend it. And so the second piece of that is ARAP funds. Right around that same time of the revow, COVID comes and goes, and you get two sets of funds. I call them COVID funds, I think some folks saw on the news, you know, back in the winter when I said COVID funds. There was some, uh, folks thinking that I did something, you know, I call it COVID, because whenever I go on the news, I always pretend, what, what is my mama gonna think when she sees this on TV? She doesn't know the difference between COVID funds and ARAP funds, so I just said during COVID, everybody knew what that meant. But we got two separate pieces of funding during that time. COVID dollars was the first batch that came our way, that we took and used for, um, uh, projects and things like that, buying things to deal with COVID. But the second piece was the thirty-some million dollars we got, that they said you can put it for your general fund and pay for your entire personnel in the whole county, and then take your county funds out and put them to capital projects if that's what you wanna do. And that's what we chose to do. That has already been filed, reported, and sent to the federal government, and it's done.
I understand.
And so there, you take that thirty million dollars with funds from the revow, and that's how you have the ability to what I call, come up with leverage. And that, those funds, if you remember from previous capital plans, we had two sewer projects that we wanted to do. We had the jail at the, at the ninety-five million that's set in the capital plan for a long time, and we never, we, we knew that probably was not going, a hundred-million-dollar jail was not gonna happen in Davison County. There wasn't gonna be, I think, four commissioners that was gonna vote on that. So that, if it's not gonna be a plan that you're gonna do, you gotta come up with another way to talk, talk about it, to continue having to come, because at some point in time, we gotta do something. Things like changing out the doors up there now, that needs to be done. That's part of the sixty-five I'm talking about now that the board's gonna hear soon on a Thursday morning meeting, that needs to get done. And we talked about that with jails, with the sheriff staff here last Thursday. So those are some safety concerns and things like that that need to get done. But my point is, that's how you come up with the money, and then we had part of that prod, part of the money going toward the Thomasville Sewer Line, taking the sewer down sixty-four, turning left going to Thomasville, and opening up this corridor to expand for commercial and industrial development. Knowing that we got some private partners out here and they own some land, that this could become. Knowing that we got some private partners out here and they own some land, that this could become a place where there could be some development. We wanted to do the same exact thing on the western side of the county, attaching to Salisbury, where we had this conversation with Lexon several years ago. We had, we got caught into a, an issue where we didn't have any capacity with them, and we said, look, we are gonna work out an arrangement with Salisbury, go across the river and open up that side of the county in addition to our, uh, business park and Samet and things like that. So we were gonna open up corridor-wise for industrial development, these two sides of the county. The north side ends up being a bedroom community like it largely is now. It's not largely re, uh, industrial or commercial. And anything much south of New Core is not possible because there's a lot of rock. And we were gonna expand the tax base, bring in industry and try to expand the tax base so we don't have to increase taxes to pay for schools and salaries for employees and things like that as we move forward. That project over there got caught into a stalemate with the, with the county because the county is not exactly keen on us coming over the river and taking what they perceive to be sewer capacity from them and other members, other municipalities within Rowan County. So it hit what I call a political stalemate. They've said, they don't, they're not real happy about that, even though he had already worked some stuff out with, with Salisbury Rowan Utilities. Remember, it's Salisbury Rowan Utilities. So the county comes in, has a say-so and says, I don't know that we like that. Um, and that kind of stopped the conversations. That project was going to be a fifty-plus million dollar project to get across that river from the business park and open up thousands of acres on that side.
Thank you. I think you pretty much covered that.
So the day that the Sportsplex got voted on, you all asked me, where would the money come from? And my simple answer was, you would take it from the Salisbury Sewer Project and move it to the Sportsplex, and you will not do the Salisbury Sewer Project right now. If you take the funds from it, obviously it's gone. May can get done in the future, but not today. And so I, I know that's the belaboring way to say it, but I want y'all again to know that's how the money came.
First of all, I didn't see any mention of any sites at all except for the one. And it was brought up the first time that there was any, um, conversation at all about Sportsplex. It was a much smaller size, but that was the site.
There was a smaller site, right, right.
But that was where it was.
Right.
The... Now, I didn't bring none of this up because I, I didn't want to get involved in the schools, but do, do, are we at max at Ledford?
Um, I don't have them all memorized. We've got some schools that are, particularly some elementary schools. I think Wahlberg's one of them and... Uh, Dr. Slate may know off the top of his head if he's here in the audience.
From what I heard, Wahlberg's the only school that's-
Yep. So we have some that are, yes.
And that's on the brick and mortar, right, Dr. Slate? That's not counting the, the modular? Ninety-seven, okay. Because they've been there for a long time, the best I remember, so.
Been there since I was in there.
Been there a long time.
But that's one of the things that I was thinking about when I was considering all of this was, is that money that's allocated for a Sportsplex could that be used in this county someplace else that would be, um, better advantage? Uh, we've got, we struggle all the time with getting enough people. And one of the things that we have, when we struggle with this is that we can't pay them like they pay for sites and like they pay Guilford, and we can't. But there's some other counties that we can, in all rest of my case, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, you're welcome. All right, any other discussion? Here none. Can I have a motion for the budget?
Motion to adopt the budget.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
One.
All right, that motion carries. All right. We'll move on to item number seven, public hearing. Um, consolidation of Midway and Gumtree Fire Department. Thank y'all. Have a good night, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Ward's here. He's gonna walk us through the, the final pieces that it needs to be this consolidation between Gumtree and Midway. Um, the budget just set part of that in motion with the tax rates and things like that in their budgets, but I think Danny's got some other pieces.
Uh, good evening, Chairman, fellow commissioners. I have Fire Chief Mike Craft with me, Fire Chief Scott Ruth, and a couple other, other folks sitting in the back room. And, uh, short and to the point is, uh, on the behalf of the Midway and Gumtree Fire and Rescue Departments to Davison County Fire Marshal's Office, request that the Davison County Board of Commissioners consider the approval of the proposal to consolidate Midway and Gumtree Fire Service Insurance and Response District by resolution with an effective date of July first, twenty-twenty-five. And will any, entertain any questions prior to hearing, I suppose?
Any questions?
Has it changed the insurance rate?
Uh, there is a, a potential for the, the insurance rating to, to move a little bit, but I don't look for it to move a lot, uh, because they're basically expanding service, having more, so it, I would expect it to improve, geez.
We're at class three. They're class four now. Uh, the state will come back in or rein, but, or reinsure, what, in, uh, eight months, nine months is what they told us when they'd come back in and look at everything.
You look for it probably to go down then, don't you?
We can keep it three, we'll be happy.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll declare the public hearing open for the consolidation of Midway and Gumtree, uh, service districts. Anybody wishing to speak in favor or in opposition? Please come. All right. Come on, yeah, please, if you don't mind, so we can get you on record in the microphone.
It's my understanding that every homeowner-
Can I get your name?
Uh-
Alice Coleman. Thank you.
It's my understanding that every homeowner in Davison County pays taxes, and part of our taxes is to cover fire and EMS services to be provided for that. If we consolidate and move things out of one district to put in another, that's gonna make the response time to some of those residents be increased considerably. And I don't want to pay taxes myself for somebody else to get more benefits than I get from it. I don't want my response time to be sacrificed. That's just a concern that I have, and I think every citizen here should have it.
Okay, ma'am, we'll have to answer that question, but I don't think they're gonna close down any basis. They're just consolidating as a whole. Is that correct or?
That's correct. We're not closing anything down. Uh, we're actually gonna add some staffing. We're gonna have twenty-four-hour staffing at Gumtree, which right now they've got part-time staffing during the day. Some days they've got it, but we're not closing anything. We're actually looking at the maps. We had the G I S department to take our maps, and we're gonna change our response areas a little bit. So use example Norman Schoeff Road, uh, Gumtree Road, where my fire district now goes within about a hundred yards of their fire district. So if we get a medical call, they're gonna send me over there instead of Gumtree. So we're gonna restructure all of that to get the response a whole lot closer and a whole lot faster to everybody in the area.
Maybe a little quicker response.
It'll be quicker.
All right, that's good, good information. All right, anybody else wishing to speak in favor or in opposition to this? All right, see you no more. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the col, consolidation?
Agreed.
Motion, second?
Mr. Chairman, this is not just to approve the consolidation, it is also to adopt the resolution and to-
Statement on consistency.
Well, no, that, there's a resolution, also part of this is to get your all's blessing on the refinancing of the Gumtree Fire-
I got you, yep, okay. So the motion, motion should include the adoption of the resolution and to endorse the financing of the Gumtree Fire Station. Yep, I didn't see that part. Thank you, Debbie. So that, his motion includes that, second? Second? Who made the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank y'all. Good luck. All right. What most of the room's been waiting on is the rezoning of, um, three hundred and fifty-eight acres, point six-three, from R S, R A one and R A two to C R. Uh, Mr. Crook, if you will introduce this. And we're glad to do this one a little bit different because I do have some people listed here when I opened a public hearing. I'd like to call these folks up first, and then, um, we'll go to the audience for public, okay?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'd like to read the legal into the record for the introduction. Uh, request by the Davison County Board of Commissioners to rezone property located in Cotton Grove Township, tax map thirty-four, lot five, containing three hundred and fifty-eight point six-three acres, more or less. Said property is located on the west side of Owen Road, approximately point five-one miles south of the N C Highway eight intersection. Said property is further located on the south side of Riverwood Road, approximately twenty-five hundredths of a mile west of the Linwood-Southmont Road intersection. Said property is further located on the east side of Beckner Road, approximately point two-nine miles south of the Riverwood Road intersection. And said property is further located on the north side of Urban Drive, approximately point three-seven mile east of the Beckner Road intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from R S, Low Intensity Residential District, and R A one and R A two Rural Agricultural Districts to that of C R, Community Recreational District. If the board would briefly, uh, divert their attention to the overhead, the highlighted property in blue, sorry about that, thongs getting in the way. The, uh, highlighted property in blue is property in question, three hundred and fifty-eight acres. Um, this is set, the, considered downtown Southmont, Linwood-Southmont Road, N C Highway eight, right here. Uh, post office is right in this area, South, Southmont School, uh, elementary school's right here. You have Riverwood Road, you've got Beckner Road, you've got Urban Drive, and you've got Owen Road here. Um, this request would be to change all of these zoning districts. This R A one that, uh, is currently located here, the R A two is currently located here, and R S is located on the west side of the property. Um, this request is largely symbolic. We could actually conduct and build the, this facility the way it's zoned right now, um, since the way it's gonna be considered under the zoning ordinance. Uh, it's, it's a somewhat of a three-pronged effort, as I like to call it, that the commissioners are, um, in the process of implementing with respect to the population growth that Davison County sees. People are coming, there's nothing we can do about that. You guys are spending money on in, uh, infrastructure for businesses and industry. The, the, the housing market, as was alluded to by the manager, um, during his, his talk about the revaluation, has exceeded expectations. And this is a, an ongoing effort by this board to, um, increase quality of life by enhancing the recreational amenities in the county. At this point, I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
So the zoning don't have to be changed at all?
No, sir. We could, we could build the, we could build the facility the way it's zoned right now.
Okay. And the reason to, for doing that is?
Well, back in April of twenty-twenty-five, we adopted a brand-new zoning district called Com- Community Recreational District. It's kind of an acknowledgement that people who live here or are moving into the county can look at our zoning map, and we're gonna go through a process where we change every single public park in the county to this district. These are just the first two, um, first two parks to go. We're also gonna hear the Yakner River Park tonight as well. So this will be an ongoing, probably over a year-long process where we'll see Hughes Park, we'll see Linwood Park. We're gonna see all of the, uh, existing parks that are, that are there now turned to Community Recreational District as a way to acknowledge that these facilities are here. So folks moving into the county can see these facilities. They may want to live next to them, they may not. They may want to, you know, not, not be close to them. So, um, that, that's somewhat the premise of why the process is taking place.
So I guess a lot of other folks do this already because when you're pulling up Google or something, it shows green spaces in, in different cities.
You, you do see that quite frequently. The, the one consistent about, thing about local land use regulation is that everybody does it different. So that, that's pretty much the most consistent piece of it. But, yeah, most, most entities have a recreational district. Some of them are broader than the one that we've adopted. Uh, ours is somewhat pointed in specific. And it, and, um, so, yeah, you, you do see this on differing scales throughout the state.
I got you. Any other questions for Staya?
So just to clarify, so I'm understanding it can be built just like it is with no change?
That is accurate.
So the main reason is just that way people moving in here, if they don't want to live near a, near a facility like that, it basically just lets them know.
Well, it's just a acknowledgement of that's the type of facility that's located on that property.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, I'm gonna declare the public hearing open. I'm gonna start my list first, and then anybody not on this list that wants to speak, uh, come up and speak. Kevin Oesley? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Kevin Oesley, and I'm the chaplain of the Lodge ninety-seven of the Fraternal Order of Police. I'm speaking on behalf of the Executive Board of Lodge ninety-seven. We have written a response to Davidson County Commissioner Chair Todd Yates, specifically addressing the flippant comment that his job is as dangerous as law enforcement officers, which may be found on our Facebook page. Today, I want to specifically address the vocation of law enforcement. Law enforcement is a vocation and not a job. A vocation is a calling, much like a minister's. A job is just something you do. Law enforcement is a vocation and not something you can run from, much like a minister attempting to flee God's call to fulfill his desire to please God by providing the ordinary means of grace for the salvation of the people. Law enforcement seeks to uphold justice, maintain peace and safety so that citizens may live quiet and peaceable lives. On Friday, June sixth, twenty-twenty-five, the Executive Board was despondent regarding the general tenor, some commissioners, and the comments made by them to law enforcement professionals when, when they sought to address grievances regarding their pay. First, to respond to the comment, why do we have to do it now? Everything does not have to be done now. These professionals have been requesting pay parity for two years. It has been pushed and pushed, and it is now time to address the issue. Many of these sergeants and lieutenants will be in the same category two years from now regarding the two percent that they are advocating receiving along with the sheriff's deputies. Next, I would like to, uh, address the statement, I am trying to be physically conservative with the taxpayer's dollar. Anyone that voted for that is not. If we consider this logically, pushing the essential employee's pay to another term and advocating and voting for a sports arena is not physically conservative. Using the, and justifying the commissioner's use of tax dollars to build a pleasure and entertainment center or sports arena is not physically responsible. First, is there a need for a sports arena? There is a need for se, for securing the law enforcement officers currently at the sheriff's office. Further, the Davidson County jail is a joke and is need replacing for years. These are needs. Government is envisioned by our founders and was created to, quote, establish justice, insure, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of livi, liberty to ourselves and our posterity. Yes, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. But make note, it's the pursuit of happiness, not happiness. These are the physically conservative values, not a sports arena, which seems to me reminiscent of the fallen empire Rome that loved gladiator sports. Lastly, I leave you with two scriptural citations. Hear the word of the Lord. You shall not oppress your neighbor or rob him. The wages of the hired servant shall not- The wages of the hired servant shall not remain with you all night until the morning." Lastly, the Gospel according to Saint Luke. "Whatever house you enter, first say, 'Peace be to this house.' And if a son of peace is there, your peace shall rest upon him; but if not, it shall return to you, and remain in the same house, eating and drinking what they provide. For the laborer deserves his wages. Do not go from house to house. Whenever you enter a house or a town, receive what you eat that is set before you. Hild a sick in it and say to them, 'The kingdom of God has come near you.' But whenever you enter a town and they do not receive you, go into the streets and say, 'Even the dust of your town that clings to our feet, we, we wipe off against you. Nevertheless, know this, that the kingdom of God has come near. I tell you, it shall be more tolerable on that day for Sodom than for that town.'" The Executive Board urges commissioners to logically consider these facts and be more careful with the tenor in which you are, treat law enforcement here in Davidson County. Because when the peace and safety we all cherish is assaulted, it is law enforcement officers who will meet and confront the aggressors and restore the tranquility we all enjoy.
Thank you, Mr. Isley. Please, please keep the applause down, will you? Please keep the applause down, we've got an official meeting. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, Angela Kleiner. How are you this afternoon?
I'm okay.
I love your food, okay? You got some great food.
I know, I, I recognize some very friendly faces, actually, up here. Um, so my name is Angela Kleiner. I'm a lifelong Davidson County resident, a local business owner in Southmont, and also live in the very neighborhood that will be directly impact, impacted by the proposed sports complex. I'm not here to oppose growth, I welcome it, but I am deeply concerned about how this project will affect the small, tight-knit community of Southmont and the families who live there year-round. We're take, we're talking about placing a high-traffic, high-capacity facility in a rural area that does not currently have the infrastructure to support it. We already face congestion on the two-lane highway that runs through our little community. There does not seem to be a clear plan to expand the utilities. A good example is sewer. Um, I am the owner and operator of Mama Sees Mac and Smash. Y'all can applaud, no, I'm just kidding. Joke, joke, sorry.
I'll applaud on that one, okay, because it's good food.
We have been open for a year, and I have been working to connect to the sewer line to simply increase our seating capacity, only to be told that I need to spend a lot of upfront money to hire an engineer, get neighboring properties to allow me an easement to cross their land, make proposals to the city and to the county, and after a high personal investment of upfront expenses, we may still be denied access due to what I'm being told is limited sewer capacity. If there's not enough capacity now, how will we manage dozens of tournaments, teams, spectators every weekend? How will we manage the growth that is inevitable with this complex coming to our community? Even more alarming are the roads selected as entrances and exits for this complex. Two of them run directly through a private neighborhood, my neighborhood. These are one-way-in, one-way-out residential streets, not designed for heavy traffic, large vehicles, or overflow. This presents serious safety concerns, not just inconvenience, but real risk to the families, the children, the pets, who live there and walk that circle and those roads every single day. This plan doesn't just bring new business. It threatens existing homes, existing businesses, and the quiet rural life that drew so many of us to Southmont in the first place. And tonight, you'll be voting on a rezoning measure that uses a brand-new zoning designation since April. One that was significantly, or, excuse me, one that was specifically created for this project and projects similar to this. This new zoning category hasn't been publicly explained to the community. We don't know what it allows, we don't understand or know what its limits are, and frankly, many residents still don't even know that this project is happening. I am respectfully asking the board to delay the rezoning vote until the community has had time to fully understand the implications of this new zone. At the very least, the citizens of Southmont deserve a clear and accessible information, published on the county website and mailed directly to those homeowners and businesses that this is going to affect. If this project is truly meant to help our community grow, then bring us into the conversation. I'm asking you to be transparent with your infrastructure plans and to make room at the table for the people who already live here. We deserve answers, not assumptions that we're making on our own. And the only way we receive this is through your transparency and your cooperation with your constituents. After coming to the rezoning meeting the other night, a couple of weeks ago, and listening to the discussions online that some of them have started, I have heard that many of my neighbors feel as though decis- decisions are being made behind closed doors, and the voices of everyday residents, homeowners, business owners, taxpayers are being ignored. For instance, last week I sent emails to each of you. I also submitted a form on the government website. I have not received responses as of this morning.
And I really did mean to call you back, and I am sorry.
I'm surprised you didn't come see me.
Yeah, I am really, I am really.
Okay, okay, all right. Um, except for the website did send me an automated reply, no answers, but an automated reply. Growth is coming, and we know that. Um, but growth without transparency, planning, and community involvement is not real responsible leadership. And I ask that this rezoning vote be delayed until the Southmont community can be properly informed. I really appreciate the time that you've given me tonight. Mr. McClure, thank you for your comments early, earlier. I know everybody, or most of everyone behind us appreciated that. Thank you so much.
And Casey, I, I don't know if we want to answer some of these questions as we go or not. It may be easier than trying to answer them all at the end. But as far as the entrance and exit over through, um, y'all's neighborhood, right? That's not gon- that's not going to happen. We never thought that was a good idea anyhow, so it should have been drawn out a long time ago. So if that rests y'all's minds any there, there's no plan to do that, you know, so, yeah. And, and what type of infrastructure did you want to know about?
Well, I know that when we're trying to get on the sewer, we're being told we've got to spend a lot of money to get engineers and get peo- and I know that we have to pay for that. And I'm not against paying for it, but what I've been told from the city of Lexington and representatives there is that I may put all this money into this, and we're just a small business. And I may put all this money into this and then still be turned down because there's not enough capacity on that one.
That's not how that works, so once you would need to come to us, that's in the county, and get an allocation for what you think you need. Lee and him can help you with it with the type of, um, seating that you have. I mean, there's, there's different criterias, I can't tell you what it is, the state makes these rules, okay? So Lee can tell you, you'll go to the sewer committee, he'll go ahead and get you an allotment. But yes, ma'am, the engineering and all that's always been on the owners to, to take care of, unless it runs right by your property and it don't.
I guess, Mr. Yates, the problem is that that engineering money is upfront, from what I'm told.
Well, no, 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 you come and get your allocation. We, we allocated Randy's Restaurant, um, thirty-five-hundred gallons three years ago, okay? So he spent the money for his engineering, and they're just now fixing, actually, he come back the other day, wanting five-hundred more gallons, um, so, but they fixing to run the sewer now. The engineers are designing it, and we do have a time limit on there. We don't, just allocate you sewer and ten years later you hadn't used it.
Right.
So we give you a reasonable amount of time. So I'm sure there'd be enough sewer allocation for your restaurant, uh, that the sewer committee would give you. Ms. Watford serves on that committee as well, so, I mean, I'm guessing you wouldn't need any more than, um, than Randy's Restaurant or less, I think he's got a hundred seats. Uh, I would think you would be a lot less than that. So, but we only, we, we do only have like two-hundred-thousand gallons of sewer for, for that part of the county. And, uh, you know, the sports complex will take a small amount of that, not, not a lot, believe it or not, for what it is. But anyhow, we'd love, I, I understand a sewer, and that's why I wanted to call you. I understand a sewer maybe at the pizza place and, um, the other one. I don't even know where the sewer's at, I know the sewer's right behind the school where we gonna tie in.
It's at Eves. We have to tie in at Eves.
It's right, it's right in front of the old fire department building, yeah.
See, I didn't even know there's a manhole on that side of the street, so.
From, you know, from what I've been told, there's a manhole right beside, or right in front of Eves.
So if you know this fellow here, you call him and he'll make sure.
Be glad to help you with that.
He'll, he'll make sure you get to the sewer committee and, and get whatever you need, okay?
Thank you very much, appreciate it, Mr. Yates.
Thank you, have a great day. Have a great night. Uh, yeah, what's the name of it again, Smash?
Mama Sees.
Mama Sees.
Mac and Smash.
I just know it's good food, I can't tell.
Is that the country's?
No, it's right there in the, in the marathon.
It's right beside the mar- it's, yeah.
Yeah, 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 I know where that's, yeah, okay.
All right, Barry Woodward? If I'm reading that right. And we'll probably circle back around to what the zoning allows and what it don't allow here shortly, so. The last thing we want is, we, we want you to know what we're doing here soon.
Seven years ago, my wife and I moved into, uh, a house on Urban, off Urban Drive, there in the Riverwood neighborhood. She got out of the car, she looked at me and she says, "This could be our little slice of paradise." Since then, it has been. We want to keep it that way, as many of us here do also. The quiet and tranquility, peacefulness of that neighborhood is subject to be disturbed, if not completely destroyed, with this project. We are here to say that that's not acceptable to the residents in that neighborhood. One of the things that this is, that I really want to find out about this, is this a community recreational zone, or is this going to be a travel ball facility? Because the layout on it, let's show, let's show the map to everybody. The layout on this thing is ten soccer fields, eight baseball fields, eight tennis courts, what else I got in here? Eight volleyball fields, six tennis courts, and pickleball fields. A community, a, a community park hits me more like something along the way at Dan Nicholas Park. Something that people are going to be able to come to and back from and have all kinds of attractions there that the families, young and old, are going to be able to enjoy. And this thing fills up with travel ball tournaments on the weekends. Our community is not going to get in there.
Right.
Plain and simple. The coaches that have said something in here about having nice fields to play on and everything, I'm not against that. But their boys are not going to get on the, they're not going to get on the field.
Well, the, the reason we, we decided on that classification, the zoning that's requested tonight is community recreation. The classification is community center. If you go to a community center, you see ball fields, you see swim, swimming pools, you see basketball gyms. Those are the types of things that are, are built by the local municipality or governmental entity, and that's, that's what this facility's going to be.
But are we not going to have camping and RV parking and that kind of stuff, and cabins on this property as well?
This is a conceptual plan, so nothing's setting, set in stone, but that is shown as an ancillary use, yes.
Because I'm looking, I'm looking at Dan Nicholas Park, um, it's on a much smaller scale of land. They got eighteen-plus shelters over there that people can rent out and reserve for weekend use or during the week use. They have, uh, a ten-acre pond that you can fish in, you can paddle boat in, uh, what else, I got all kinds of stuff. Horseshoe cornhole area, boy scout, girl scout areas, outdoor theater, a playground, uh, carousel, train ride, nature center, and a barnyard, wildlife and nature habitat, campground, we talked about campground store and campground showers for people that wanted to go there. This is more like a community park center to me than what this is going to be. This is going to be bringing in people from all over the southeast to come in here and play tournament ball, which is going to cost them money to be able to get on the field, which in turn, to me, sounds more like it's a business than it is a community center. Because they're going to be raking in money to get these people in here. There's forty-five-hundred, upwards of forty-five-hundred parking spaces allocated for this place. Now, my concern, um, Angela brought up, and you addressed it, that there would be no traffic running through our neighborhood, that's been addressed. But you talking about turning over these ball fields all day long, every day, all weekend long, the number of people coming in and out of that place, I don't know how you're going to handle it on, on Owen Road and Route eight. And if an emergency happens down there, God forbid, the emergency vehicles are not going to be able to get in and out of there either because of the congestion. This is crazy. I don't think, number one, I don't think we have the, the infrastructure for it. We brought up the idea, you brought up the idea, Mr. McClure, about where this money came from, how it come out of nowhere. The American Relief Fund that was instituted during COVID. This was money that was supposed to go to assist in educati- educational aspects under privileged people. This was supposed to help with small business growth and maintaining the small businesses and keep them from going out of business, as well as helping them get through it and grow further past it. This is not part of that. This, anything I read in that act doesn't have anything to do with a sports complex, nothing. Where money should be helping our small business people to grow and make it easier for them to keep, be in business and stay in business, and not, not taking it away from them. Tight-fisted and holding on to it, this is, this is money that should have spent, been spent years ago for the people of this county. And it was not. This is a residential, I, I'll, I'll go over this a little bit redundantly. This is a residential ne- neighborhood. People walk, ride bikes, ride golf carts, walk their dogs, jog. It's quiet. Go home in the afternoon, sit on my front porch, I can hear the birds sing, and that's about nothing else there. But you put this in, and if you look at this map closely, there are going to be some of these fields are right in these people's backyards, right there. You're going to have light pollution, you're going to have noise pollution, and you're going to have traffic pollution. And this is, this is just an awful lot to throw in that little, small community of Southmont all at one time. This, you know, this is, the exponentially increased traffic and everything that comes along with it will destroy this forever. And it is a nice neighborhood and a nice area. That's all I have to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodward.
Good afternoon, evening, Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
I am a resident of Southmont and have been for twenty-four years. But I, what I want to do here is I want to give the folks behind me some working knowledge about how this transpired since the commissioners failed to do so. So everybody, so everyone is aware that this has been going on for eighteen-plus months. The initial property was sixty-six acres north of Jersey Church Road, um, I'm sorry, yeah, that would not perk. That's why that deal fell through, is that, I, I feel pretty good about that statement. Then you moved down to Southmont and paid three-and-a-half million dollars from the Frank family for that three-hundred-and-fifty-eight acres that was way over tax value. So, you know, my concern is, I ain't seen the first commissioner in Southmont. Not the first one of you folks drove down to Southmont and had a conversation with the people who live down there every day and asked, "How you feeling about this?" You bought the property knowing what you was going to use it for, but you never discussed it with a single soul that lives in the Southmont community. You talk about transparency, there is none. You've got a sitting board member that has no idea where we pulled sixty-five million dollars from. That is a communication issue. I don't understand any of this. So the rezoning, I'd like to talk about that. So it was originally zoned R A two. So instead of rezoning, as you say, you can build on it now. So instead of rezoning, as you say, you can build on it now, because what happened was, instead of having a first rezoning meeting, you slid sports complex under RA two, and the board approved that. That prevented you from having to redo a rezoning meeting at that particular time. So that's apparently how some of this stuff was hidden from the citizens of the Southmont community. We don't want the complex. Nobody in this room wants it. You didn't ask anybody if they wanted it. You're just going to take three hundred and fifty-eight acres of land in my backyard and put whatever you feel like there. You're hoping it's going to be a cash cow so you can make some money. You ain't got to live down there every day. In the middle of the summer, with a lake running on the weekend, traffic is busting at the seams now. And you want to throw five thousand cars in Southmont on the weekend on Highway Eight? That ain't going to work, that, that, that dog ain't going to hunt. It ain't going to happen. According to DOT, they have made no plans to improve any roads or infrastructure referenced to the highways in the Southmont community. Looks like to me the county's putting the cart way before the horse. So it's sixty-five million dollars that come out of the air. Mr. Smith just acknowledged that we've been waiting on a jail for eight years. Eight years. And all of a sudden, within eighteen months, you're going to take sixty-five million dollars to build a sports complex that we don't even need when you've been wanting to jail for eight years? Who is managing the money around here?
All right, please keep the applause down.
So here's what's happening, is we need a jail. Bad, I know. I just retired from the sheriff's office thirty years here. I know how bad we need a jail. So what's, what, what's happening here is what, what this, this board is forcing to happen is, because we can't house the inmates. We have to broker deals to put people back out on the street that, "Oh, I was being jailed." That's what we have to do. I'd like to know how Sheriff Simmons feels about the new jail plan versus the original plan that y'all discussed with him. It seems like to me that the sheriff's office is getting very little say in these jail plans. A tax revow, I'd like to touch on that. So you, you don't raise my taxes, but you're getting more money out of me anyway. So you, you raise my property value at the current tax rate and you bring in more money, which is basically the same thing as raising my taxes. You're just going to take more money out of my pocket. Sixty-five million dollars. We've had it sitting in the bank, sitting in the bank. We need deputies, we need EMS folks, we need all this stuff, and you're going to bank sixty-five million dollars because you want to. Why don't some of you folks take a trip down to Southmont on a Saturday afternoon around the lake and see what the traffic's like? Or maybe you should just reevaluate and look for another spot to put it. You know, when I worked for the sheriff's office, we bought a big act, big item, big ticket item, they get three quotes. Three quotes. You didn't even try to get three spots. You just bought what you wanted, didn't ask nobody. As I said, nobody in Southmont wants this. You put it on a ballot sometime around eighteen, some kind of test survey, they told you then they didn't want it. You didn't listen, you did it anyway. I'm going to close by saying this. I am appalled, as a citizen of this county, at how my tax dollars are being handled. Now, I can't do much more than stand up here and express my opinion. But I can tell you this, the community of Southmont, we ain't done yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, who else would like to speak in? I'm done with this list, Debbie. They're all done with it. Wishing to speak in favor or in opposition, come on up, sir. How are you tonight?
Doing well, how are you?
I'm good.
So we don't have, oh, you just needed my name, sorry, Philip Hernandez. So we don't have property directly adjacent to where the sports complex is being supposedly put. Regardless of whether or not I think it's a good idea or not, whether I think it's, uh, fiscally responsible or not, I do see the concern for the infrastructure. We also see the concern for the traffic. I know it's been brought up many times. The traffic is not just going to impact the area immediately around it, but the other areas in that community. You already have multiple dangerous intersections within that area. Things that they've run multiple wrecks, had to airlift multiple patients from. I implore you that if you're going to put that there, again, regardless of whether or not I think it's a good idea or not, you need to have a mitigation plan when it comes to traffic, when it comes to traffic management, when it comes to making sure that your emergency response is up to par. I've worked in a county before that has a similar sports complex. I'm not going to say they did a great job of how they put it. I'm not going to say that any county that I've seen have a sports complex of our surrounding counties has done a great job, but they at least made the decision to put the sports complex somewhere it does not impact residential neighborhoods. That is something that we have seen this county do before with some of the projects, is making sure the infrastructure, business, industry, things like that, go places that do not interfere with people's daily lives, such as Eggers. That went somewhere that does not affect many people's residential daily routines. I don't understand why we can't do the same with the sports complex. I'm all for the county having something that brings in revenue. That is understandable. We want to make sure that the county progresses. We want to make sure that the county brings in revenue to provide money towards the things that matter. Whether it be critical infrastructure with power, water, sewer, whether it be emergency response with EMS, definitely our law enforcement who deserve the raises that they're asking for. I understand that's a sore subject for everybody right now. But it is something that should be noted, it is important to have something that brings people to the county, to put money into the county's pocket to be able to do the things that your constituents ask for. But I think it ought to be looked at in different places around the county. Again, this is a small sampling of your population of Davidson County. But I can attest to the fact that a majority of your county probably shares the same ideas. I can also tell you that no matter where you put this, not everybody's going to be happy. But you can at least look for somewhere else that is better for the overall population of the county. Somewhere that's more, uh, it's easier to get to from the interstate, especially if it's going to be used for travel ball teams. Um, it's just one of those things that's going to have to take common sense and collaboration. And I implore you again, as somebody who works with not just emergency services, but also management and emergency management, making sure you have the ideas and plans in place to make sure it is safe for everybody and it mitigates things for people's daily lives so that they're not interrupted. Because if nobody wants to live in Davidson County because of certain things, you're just going to lose all of that money as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next, how are you this afternoon?
All right, my name is Steve Gusevsky. Uh, I live, Gusevsky, G U S as in Sam, E F as in Frank, S K I. I live across the street, across Highway Eight from where this proposed site is. I don't live in the Riverwood neighborhood. Uh, as far as the zoning goes, and a guy brought this up at the last meeting with the zoning, but, uh, I'm reading from the standards, the county standards for RA one and RA two. And some of the, uh, specifics in those standards say no light, no night activity shall be permitted adjacent to any residential election, uh, residential district dawn to dusk. So I'm assuming, I've been to a lot of these travel ball, ball games, I've, I've got grandsons that play, and they, a lot of them go after dusk, and they do have lights. So that is not allowed under RA one and RA two. Uh, also, the youth shall not be permitted to locate adjacent to any existing place of worship, daycare, nursing home, or school. And obviously, we're adjacent to a school. That's not allowed under RA one and RA two. Uh, parking shall not be detrimental to nearby properties due to noise, glare, congestion, or other factors. Well, there's been a lot of discussion tonight about noise and congestion that will be happening. So, uh, to say that we can build this under RA one and RA two, to me, is a little deceptive because obviously, when you do these travel ball, ball fields, uh, a lot of this stuff that's in RA one and RA two not allowed will be happening. So I, I believe that's why we're trying to change it to the, uh, community recreational zoning.
Mr. Gusevsky, were you reading from the, uh, commercial recreational outdoor special use permit?
I, I got this off the county website.
Thank, yes, sir, that's what that is. That's a, that's a different category, uh, than what we're classifying this under. So those are specific standards that you'd have to apply. That was originally designed for a paintball facility, and we've used that for private, single-use, uh, facilities that you pay as soon as you come on the property. That's why those standards are there. That, that's a little bit different than what this is with all the different multifaceted uses that are there.
It already changed the classification.
Right, right. The, the, the classification that we're putting this under has been in the ordinance under RA one and RA two since nineteen ninety. We didn't change that classification, sir. Pardon?
The C I, whatever.
The CR, the CR district is a new district, but the, the community center use has been in the Davidson County zoning ordinance allowed by right since nineteen ninety. So we did not make any changes to that, to, to slide it in or, or do anything deceptive or underhanded.
Well, it doesn't sound like it was that type, type of district before. I mean, I, I'm not getting them by terminology, but what I'm saying, that was rural.
Mr. Chairman, you want him to come up to the mic?
Yeah, if you don't mind, come up if you, if you want to speak and ask questions, so. He can, he can answer your question.
My name's William Gasset. Gasset, G A S S E T T.
Yes, sir.
Now, I'm not understanding, because it sounds to me like it was residential. You're saying, however, this recreation, community thing.
Th- this is a new.
Like that got slid in, so nobody knew could change it.
The, the, the advertisement and the change to the zoning ordinance is a statutory process that we have to follow. We have to advertise in the newspaper, and we have to do things to, to make changes to the zoning ordinance. All of those statutory requirements were followed. We, we didn't.
When?
Well, it was approved.
I never heard anything about a change.
It was approved in, it was approved in April of this year. But this is, this is after we've had, you know, six months of, of planning board meetings and things of that nature to, to hash out what would be allowed in the district.
I'm pretty sure most of these people didn't hear about it.
Well, i- and respectfully, to, to do a mailing to the entire county would, would be cost prohibitive. That'd be me.
Oh, you got sixty-five million, but you can't s- sign us a letter?
All right, um, excuse, excuse.
My, my point is that statutory regulations were followed to make the text amendment.
Okay.
I, I, I think something I heard, though, Lee, was they think the sports complexes couldn't have went in the original RA one and two.
It's classified as a community center, and that use has been in RA one and RA two, allowed by right with an X, since nineteen ninety, since zoning was adopted as part of the county.
So I think that was the original question I heard.
The classification, and who decided to make that classification?
That was adopted.
Because it doesn't sound like a community center to me.
That, that was adopted in nineteen ninety. I, I, as far as it was a sample.
Something this big was considered a community center?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I'm a little confused by that one, to say the least. Also.
I don't want, I don't want you to be confused. I mean, we, we want you to understand, but again, this is zoning. It could go there since nineteen ninety in the zoning that it is now, so.
Okay, I guess I can't argue that, but I will say, Route Eight is a tough road as it is. This is going to be a disaster. And you might not live down there, but I do. So I don't know why this can't be po- po- postponed like somebody else asked, to get more clarification and more plan upfront, so we know what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next, anybody wishing to speak in favor or in opposition? Thank you, I've seen you before.
Yep, I've been here before. My name's Mike Lyda, L Y D A. All right, one of the key factors this board must consider in whether or not to approve this rezoning request is the impact to surrounding properties. As an adjoining property owner, I do not think the county has adequately addressed the impact on my and other adjoining residential properties. I enjoy the dark skies in my property and my ability to take photos of satellites, comets, and planets from it. This park will bring massive parking lot lights next to my property. I see no evidence of an impact study on light pollution in the rezoning request. And I urge you to vote no until this significant impact on our properties is addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, anybody wishing to speak in favor or in opposition?
My name is Ron Marina. M A R I N A, like where they keep the votes? You're welcome.
That was too easy.
I was actually first, first noticed this from a quote from the Davidson local daily news, and it guarded my attention. And the quote was, "Since there is no zoning change or debt to be incurred for the project, the county is not required to give public notice." And you didn't. And I think that's one of the major problems here, is that you kept it under wraps. And you didn't allow the community to give their input, their thoughts, their fears, how their properties would be affected. They had the right to express that to this group, and you denied them that. Uh, there are also other possible uses for, uses for that sixty-five million dollars. Uh, you could actually do a reasonable number of athletic fields for kids of our community. No one really opposes that. School resource officers to maintain the security and safety of our kids and staff at local schools. And as I listened to the, I guess it was the superintendent who said, "One of their schools is a hundred and twenty-eight percent beyond capacity." School buildings are going to have to be built. You've got sixty-five million dollars and the wherewithal to do that. And you're choosing to put a sports complex in a community that doesn't want it, and you're going to forever change the complexion of that community. Much-needed infrastructure improvements to support the growing number of housing developments and the current population explosion that's resulted, that has resulted in already horribly overburdened roads. If you're familiar with any of those roads, by the way, Route Eight, which is essentially a two-lane road, you're talking about ninety-three thousand visitors to that community in a year. Do you think that two-lane road is going to accommodate ninety-three thousand visitors? It's not. And the other roads that lead up to it are all windy and curvy. You're going to have all kinds of accidents. You're going to have people being injured in those accidents. God forbid, there could even be some fatalities. But you're not even considering any of that. So I, the things that I oppose are mainly based upon the scale of this project. As I said before, a couple of fields here and there to try to help the kids out, fine, that's a fine thing. But this scale is three hundred and fifty acres, ten soccer fields, eight baseball fields, thirty-five acre water park, forty-five hundred parking spaces, and ninety-three thousand visitors. You don't think that's going to have an adverse effect on Southmont? You don't think that's going to have an adverse effect on Southmont? The manner in which this project was planned, and since the county believed that it was not required to give public notice, made the conscious decision to do exactly that and purposely keep it from good people of Southmont, who would be most affected by this grandiose, large-scale sports complex. I find it interesting that not one board member thought it necessary or was courteous enough to ask anyone from Southmont how this mega-complex would impact their lives. Notice was given out sparingly, and most residents of Southmont only found out about it from the bare minimum number of posted signs that boarded the property, and the signs were so small that no one could read their tiny print without first parking their cars or walking up close enough to read them. The irony is that you have sixty-five million dollars to work with, and you're going to build this mega-complex. It's going to cost more than sixty-five million dollars to build this, to build, uh, the infrastructure in order to get to it. Please reconsider this decision. It is a bad, ill-conceived decision. What, what I fear most is that you already have your minds made up, because you've purchased the land, you've kept it from the public, and I'm sorry whether you believe that to be true or not. The truth is that you could have certainly made better effort to publicize it and didn't. Please, don't be so stuck in your decision that you can't change midterm. This is a bad decision for everybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon. All right. The next wishing to speak in favor and opposition?
My name is Jackie Taylor. Hello, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Y'all blocked me, so at least I get to speak here. I pretty much feel the way they do, that I'm upset over the lack of transparency, that there was very little information given about what was happening. I've been living on Holloway Church Road for over twenty years, and I travel Highway eight all the time. I can't go anywhere without traveling Highway eight. Never had a problem until they put the four-way stop signs there, and now so many times I've almost had people rear in me because I stop with the stop signs, and they don't. And, you know, I've got a nice car, and I kind of want to keep it that way. So, also, I just want to point out that I understand why you blocked me, because you're sick of hearing about senior services, but I do have a voice, and I do feel that whether you agree with me or not, I still have the right to voice my opinion. And so, that's all I got to say tonight. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor and opposition?
Amalia Wagner, A M A L I A. So, I wrote this, um, prior to you rescinding the entrances and exits into Riverwood, so I'm still going to read it as I wrote it.
Okay.
Um, my name is Amalia Wagner, and I live in the quiet residential neighborhood near the proposed Southmont Sports Complex development. I'm here on behalf of many concerned neighbors who are alarmed by the plan to create two entrances and exits from the sports complex directly through our community. That aside, if, I travel Lynwood-Southmont every day, and I don't know, but you can probably pull up the statistics. In the last few years since we've had so many more permanent residents on the lake, there has been an increase in fatalities and terrible accidents on the road, so I think that's definitely something that needs to be looked at. Um, our roads are narrow, and our neighborhood was never designed to handle high-traffic volumes. The increase in traffic would put our residents at risk, especially children, pedestrians, and cyclists. We especially are concerned about emergency vehicle access, and that would still remain the same even if it doesn't come into our neighborhood. Um, we're also deeply worried about the impact on our environment and our wildlife. Our area is home to deer, birds, and other species that would be displaced or harmed by the noise, lighting, and disruption of a large sports complex. Our peaceful rural way of life would change overnight. And speaking of light and noise, the facility will likely host events in the evening, bringing bright lights and loud noise that will be impossible to ignore for families who moved here for peace and quiet. Then there's the issue of infrastructure. Um, those of us that live there, we know there's no sewer lines, hotels and restaurants nearby. Our cell service is poor, we lose power often, and our internet is unreliable. We simply do not have the infrastructure to support a project of this size. Lastly, and I say with real concern, large developments like this can sometimes unintentionally bring social changes. With increased traffic and foot traffic, we worry about potential increases in homelessness, drug-related activity entering our neighborhood, especially given the lack of support services and law enforcement presence nearby. We want to keep our neighborhood safe and secure for our families. So, please reconsider this, um, and we support growth without sacrificing the safety, peace, and character of existing communities. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. How are you this afternoon?
My name's Debbie Smith, and I live on Urban Drive, property adjacent to the proposed sports complex. I have a question, first of all. As landowners, why can't we get a map that shows exactly what's happening? Everything we see is so blurred when you zoom in on it. None of these residents have any paperwork other than come to this meeting. And the second question, have there been any impact studies? Environmental impacts? We have lake runoff already on Urban Drive, bad flood zones, and the lighting impact. This was an agricultural property. What about the habitat? I mean, has anybody done any impact studies? And if so, we'd like to see them, because it does affect us and our property. And again, I'd like to see a clear map of what we could expect. And another question for you, Commissioner Yates, if those Beckner Road entrances and exits aren't going to be, then where are they? There's no way Owen Road can handle that.
Uh, the engine-
The map is not correct.
The engineers, well, like I say, I've never thought it was a good idea to bring traffic out over there. Um-
Well, we need a new map.
Well, a- again, th- this was a, uh, what's the word I'm looking for?
Conceptual.
Conceptional map, okay? And like I say, I talked with our park director, and I said, "I just, that's not a good idea." I know folks that live over off of Beckner and, uh, all in there. It's just not a good idea. So, they, they will have to build, and all this stuff will pass a DOT, uh, traffic study. I mean, all the engineering work will have to be done, but we will, I, I don't want anything to do with it if it comes out on Beckner, okay? I just don't think that's-
Well, we, we, we have more communication, paper communication, I don't care, from you guys. Like, we got notice to come to this meeting, three of them. That's the first we'd heard of it. So, will we get maps? Will we get studies? I want to see the work.
You know, all the studies will be done, and you can ask for it at any time you want to. Environmental studies, the runoff will be better than what it is now when we do it. But, but all the studies, that's what the engineering is for, is to do the studies, to do the, um, the impact study, the highway study, the roads, the entrances coming in and out. That's what that'll be. Now, just so you know, the family that had this property wanted, they didn't want to sell it to Housing Developments, okay? Mr. Frank owned it, and they just didn't want to sell it to come a big old Housing Development. So, that's one of the reasons this property come the way it did.
Know that story. True.
Right, okay. So, that's, they wanted it to be something. They wanted it to be some type of park. Uh, they was afraid that if somebody got a hold of it and turned it into housing, that's what not, Mr. Frank wouldn't have wanted then. And, uh, so that's kind of where some of this has come from, uh, with that. But again, like he said, if it's not this, then probably a big developer, you know, will have to put it on the market and sell it.
I agree with that, and I also agree, we need better schools. We need a lot more in this county than that sports complex. We've got plenty of places to play ball. Play ball in your yards, that's where I do it.
Thank you ver- thank you very much.
I'll see y'all opposed.
Thank you very much. Yep. Thank you. All right. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor or in opposition?
I have a question. Your family's studies will be done. When?
Well, that's-
They're taking a vote on doing it tonight, right?
Mm-hmm.
And we're trying to get you to hold off and delay it. So, what, we're going to see the studies afterwards?
Well, the engineering work's never done on a project until we decide that the project, and, and the project's already been deci-
We do studies.
The, the, the project's already been decided, okay? The project's been voted on back, I don't even know when. So, what we're doing tonight is just voting on the zoning of this property. So, that's, that's what's happened tonight. They, they decided to change the, the zoning of this property, so-
I love the "they," okay?
I say "they," that's the planning and zoning. Recommended that, that we turn these, these different properties, not only this one. We got another one, we, we flipped the page.
Uh-huh.
All these different parks in the county will be rezoned to this new classification. Now, again, all the parks that's here now is on the RA ones and the RA twos. They're on, they're on the property that's zoned just like this piece of property.
So, this meeting was in, in no way going to change anything?
Just the zoning. This, we are here about the zoning.
Which we're trying to start.
Right.
If you haven't caught on.
Right, but the, the, the project can go there anyhow without the zoning, so, yep. So, anybody else?
For the next vote.
Thank you, sir. Yep. You ha- you have that right. That's what's great about America. All right. You, next, ma'am. Thank you.
My name is Kim Lyda, L Y D A. I live on Urban Drive. Um, this is a zoning petition.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's a zoning petition to rezone to a newly created classification.
Yes, ma'am.
Properties that are currently zoned are RA one, RA two, and RS. As I understand the zoning ordinances, the compatibility with surrounding properties and impacts should be taken into account when rezoning. As has been demonstrated over and over again this evening, those impacts, whether they be environmental, they be light, they be traffic, they be water, they be steward, shore, they be infrastructure, they be EMS, uh, services, have not yet been evaluated. I also would note, we've said that this proposed classification is community center. This proposed request and the plan that has been submitted seems to go well beyond the scope of what one would reasonably consider to be a community center. And there has been statements to the effect that the campgrounds and other aspects of it, the water park, the forty-five hundred parking spots, RV camping, that those would be ancillary uses. Mr. Yates, you yourself have indicated you're not in favor of ingress egress onto Riverwood and Beckner Roads, but yet the proposed rezoning maps with this request show those ingress and egresses on the map. If this committee votes tonight, this commission votes tonight to approve that request, we're going to approve the application that has been submitted without undertaking these impact studies that you're required to do, and without taking into account these ancillary uses. We would ask, and I think it's already been asked tonight, that you postpone this rezoning and take adequate time to conduct the impact analysis, to really understand what's the change that's occurring. I believe the county manager, when describing this new zoning, um, classification, noted that we're, we created this zoning classification so people would know when they bought property what they were buying next to. You're about to broaden from RA one, RA two, and RS with this if you approve this proposal that includes the breadth of the description of this particular park. And I also would note that RS zoning, as I look at the zoning ordinance, does not permit a community center as a, a, a right, as a matter of use.
That, that's accurate.
That's accurate.
Yeah, that's accurate. But the, the area that's highlighted is the RA one and the RA two on the map, that were the most, most facilities are located.
But you're rezoning the entire area shown in blue?
Correct.
And that includes the RS properties?
Yes, ma'am.
Which, community center is not a permitted use. Correct.
Cor- correct, yes.
So, I respectfully request that this commission postpone the rezoning request and complete necessary due diligence and impact analysis, and involve the community in a transparent way, as has been requested by multiple people tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next, please, anyone else wishing to speak in favor and opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor or opposition? All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. See none. Uh, Mr. Smith, would you like to follow up any, or, uh?
I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman. I'll turn it over to Lee for any kind of follow-up from here. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and appreciate everyone's comments, and I've tried to take notes as best I can. Um, what I would like to do is, to start this off, is read the purpose of the Community Recreation District that was adopted in April. It says, "The intent of the Community Recreation District is to provide a sense of community with respect to where recreational amenities are located. Said district will inform the general public geographically so informed decisions can be made in purchasing property. This district can be located in a variety of locations across Davidson County where unique recreational or historical features are located or geographically to best serve the county's residences." Um, that, no one, no one here is blind to the fact, if built, this facility's going to change Southmont community. There's no question about that. Um, I, I think, and, and Chairman Yates alluded to it a little bit earlier, that we've heard a lot of concern about traffic, rightfully so. Uh, but there, there's never going to be an instance where you've got forty-five hundred people leaving at one time, even, even, or coming in at one time. You, you're going to have, you know, Derek, Derek-
Excuse me now, can we, let him explain, okay?
Even with the championship facility fields, if there's a tournament and there's a championship game, which would draw probably the most crowd of anything, you're looking at three or four hundred people, uh, max to, to, and that's, that's coming from the, uh, the Parks, the Parks and Recreation Director. Um, with respect to NC Highway eight and the traffic flow, the, um, DOT oftentimes reacts and is reactive instead of proactive. Um, when I came to work here in the, in the early nineties, uh, US Highway sixty-four between Ashford and Lexington had been on, on the widening list forever with the actions that the commissioners have taken with respect to building infrastructure, the recruitment of New Core, and other private partners that have created potential industrial sites. Uh, right-of-way acquisition will begin on that facility in twenty-twenty-eight, um, and they'll start construction on that as probably soon as twenty-thirty, the money's allocated. So, it's somewhat like if you build it, they will come. Uh, I know that Highway eight is a two-lane facility, and it was scheduled to be widened several years back, but frequently with, with the NC DOT, everybody has needs, and that money disappeared. Uh, with a facility of this size, the potential to get NC Highway eight widening or three-lane back on the tip plan is, is a very real possibility. Um, the, I want to speak to, a little bit to impact. I know that the Parks and Recreation, and again, this is a, um, this is a conceptual plan. Anybody that wants a clear plan, please contact our office. When, when we had the planning board meeting, uh, I, I met with folks outside, and I, I emailed them a, a very clear plan the very next day. The problem with the conceptual plan is, it shows facilities and amenities. These things are subject to additions, deletions. We've got environmental stuff to do. We've got locational things. You, you, you never end up with a, a finalized plan that, that exactly mirrors your conceptual plan. So, some things, we, we show these things on this plan, and they're located in a certain place, they have potential to move, or they may be located exactly where, um, the facility shows it. It just depends on what's found during the, uh, you know, the vetting of the property and, and the, um, the, the, the plans that are, that are going to take place, the impact plans. Um, I'm going to read the staff's recommendation, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions by the board. The applicants wish to rezone the subject property to CR, Community Recreational District, as a form of acknowledgement and awareness. This rezoning is largely symbolic, as a proposed community center can be built in the RA one and RA two classifications that are on the property today. Today, Davidson County has already invested over thirteen million dollars in its existing park system, making, making improvements all over the county. Said investment and upgrades are focused on improving the quality of life for Davidson County citizens, as well as offering tourism opportunities within the county. Davidson County's comprehensive, comprehensive plan promotes orderly growth within the county by identifying the county's recreational and historical assets with the CR Community Recreational zoning classifications. Citizens will be more aware of the county's recreational opportunities which will promote the quality of life for anyone involved. With the announcement of the, of the large community center in Southmont, additional monies will be allocated towards the goal of providing recreational amenities for citizens. This lo- location is a large mostly wooded tract, said property adjoins the Southmont Elementary School property to the east, to the north, south, east, and west. This, of this track is surrounded by residential development on small, medium, and large acreage tracts. Care will need to be taken in developing this property to minimize any potential impacts this regional community center may have. It's staff's understanding that a hundred-foot buffer of trees will be left intact around as much of the boundary of this property as is possible. Davison County recognizes the traffic this community center could produce. With the level of athletic facilities and potential tourist attractions planned, traffic will need to be handled responsibly. NC DOT will have the final approval, and this is, this is an older document, says for all three entrances, I understand conceptually that may change. Um, the, the current plan proposes improvements to both Owen and River, the Riverwood roads, since these will be the primary entrances to the facility. Additional improvements may be planned in the future. There's no question that if approved, this project will change the, change the character of this part of the county and Southmont. The scale of this facility will create change for changing conditions in the area, making the zoning requests compliant with Article seven, Administration, Section seven point ten amendments of the Davison County zoning ordinance. A secondary argument can be made that change for change of conditions exists with the inmigration of people moving into North Carolina and Davison County specifically. Our area is growing and responsible planning should facilitate increased housing, job, and recreational opportunities. Said property is located in an area that is recognized by the Davison County Land Development Plan as transitional between the Southmont Commercial and Industrial Center and the residential area around High Rock Lake. Statements one point one, one point two, one point four, one point five, one point seven, one point eight, one point sixteen, one point seventeen, one point twenty-one, five point four, five point nine, seven point four, eight point five, twelve point one, twelve point two, twelve point five, and seventeen point one support this zoning amendment. Staff feels the applicant's request is reasonable and consistent with the county's adopted plan and would recommend approval of the rezoning request."
Alright, now we've heard staff recommendations, any other questions? I did, some, someone had a, um, made a statement about Dan Nicholas Park a while ago, I looked it up, and it's four hundred and twenty-five acres.
Okay.
And they say there's about seven hundred thousand people a year that, that frequent that park. So, if those numbers are right, I'm looking at, I guess that's Bringle Ferry Road through there, and that's a two-lane road.
Yes, sir.
That handles the traffic, and they have lake traffic too, going down to the, to the landing there, I guess, at, um, Tamarack, so, I just wanted to bring that up, somebody didn't think it was that many acres or whatever, but, okay, alright, um. So, no other questions, do I have a motion? In favor or in opposition of rezoning?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say, just sitting here tonight, I see these people's concerns, wanting a little more information, I think a lot of them feel like they were properly informed and it was just sprung upon them. I, I don't see that it would hurt to honor their request just to, to briefly delay it where they could be better informed, just where they could have more of a sense of comfort, feeling like they're fully informed on it. So, that's just my feeling.
Now, I guess, um, if, if I'm hearing this right, this zoning, whether this passes or not, the sports plugs can still go there, it's-
That's our interpretation of the ordinance, yes, sir. And we- We, we, we did notify all adjoining property owners around this. Um, we're, we're only required to do that one time as per statute for a zoning change. We, as a courtesy, always send something out for the planning board meeting, we do it a, a week prior, that's not required by state law, I know that short notice, the way the mail moves, and we did, we do post the signs a, a week prior to the planning board meeting in an, as, as, as an attempt to be open and let people have a venue to come talk, and we, we had a pretty good crowd that, that showed up. That is outside of the twenty, ten to twenty-five day window of notification and posting that is required by statute, so we have to do it a second time. And that's why we, we send, we sent a second notice to all adjoining property owners and, and verified that the signs were up and, and, and in place.
Okay. Um. Like I say, I, I understand the concern going out on, uh, on, uh, the residential area over there, um.
I, I would like to say this is a general district request, so if, if, if approved, the, you know, this is not part of the application. This, again, is a conceptual plan, it's subject to change, you can delete a drive, you can do whatever, in the end, NC DOT will, will, uh, be consulted, maybe even through a traffic impact analysis study that will, um, you know, speak to the ingress and egress to the facility wherever those points are located.
So, if we delete that from the zoning tonight, we, we could actually delete that little area or say we're not gonna zone it?
You, you don't even have to speak to it, and you could delete it at some point in the future.
To make these folks feel better, but, I don't know, they still may end up wanting a walking trail over there because I know there's gonna be a, a nice long walking trail around the park, so, I'm not so sure that they will not want access when they, they see it, um.
And this facility will be used by, you know, high schools for swim meets, there'll be, there'll be free opportunities for basketball, the, the pickleball courts are, are always gonna be available for any citizen to come, and that, that's why we, we differentiated this between a strictly commercial use. Now, yeah, the existing facilities that we have, Hughes Park, that's leased out for tournaments currently, it's, it's in the RA districts as well, but again, it's a public entity and, and it's, it's designed these and they're, they're, if nobody's using the facilities, then people can go have pickup games in the basketball gym. I can, uh, confirmed all this with, with Thomas today, so, um, that's why we considered it the classification that we did.
Alright, well, Mr. Kessler, I don't know if you got an email today, I know I got a couple of calls and emails, and I don't know what the rest of the board did, and I understand y'all in opposition, okay, I hear you. Um, some folks did contact the county today through the website from Southmont, so they, said they were very much in favor, I guess kinda like Ms. Kleiner there, they said they wasn't, weren't in opposition of it totally, they just didn't have some questions, uh, answered or whatever, but, so, we do have some folks out there that do want this, and I understand everybody that spoke here tonight does not want it, so, um, anyhow, but I, still, the board's open for a motion, uh, to either approve or deny, um. But again, I, I guess if this is denied, I want everybody to understand, the sports complex can still go on because it's already been voted on, the money's been voted on, okay, to move forward. So, I'm not so sure we're gonna have any more information for these folks three weeks from now than we gonna have, or two months from now till the engineers start designing it than we gonna have anyway, because again, tomorrow, whether this rezoning happens or not, this is still an approved project to move forward, so, and it's been, but- It won't show anything, the project, it's already been voted on to move forward with the project, no ma'am, the questions and all, I'm sorry, it's already, so, there's, can somebody make a motion either to approve-
Mr. Chairman, I vote to deny the request and adopt the resolution on a statement of consistency.
Okay, we have a motion. All in favor? Say aye. Oh, that's right, we need a second, anybody got a second? He's gonna deny the zoning.
It shouldn't even been on here.
Um, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
I was seeing what you're saying. Uh, uh, if, if we give more time, it, it gives people the ti- time to call your office to come, come request something.
That's right.
But, but what you're saying is, we're still going to build the complex.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with that complex, and it has to do with a zoning request, that's it.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're trying to do, is to have a motion for, uh, uh, a zoning change.
This is an effort to-
On this property.
Correct, it's to try to make all of these facilities uniform with respect to zoning classification, that's all it is.
I, I think, I think that's clar- clarified.
But, but these people need to understand that just because he's denying this, don't mean it's not going forward, it's going forward, so, you know, again-
We understand that.
Okay.
But we don't understand how it's gonna impact the value of her, but one in profit, if they do CR, that's what we want more clarification on.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I submit my motion.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so that motion, uh, fails, so the zoning is not there, but the complex still moves forward, okay, so-
Oh, oh, the motion to the, that, that failed.
The motion was, yeah.
It carried, yeah, yeah, but I'm saying-
Another request, yes.
The rezoning failed is what I, I meant, the rezoning failed, so, alright, thank y'all very much, uh, have a great night. That was a big mistake. Uh, we talked about that, we had talked about it.
It was, no, Karen and Todd voted against the motion. Absolutely, they're probably, ba- basically, basically-
This is the biggest mess I've ever seen since I was on this board, because it was unanimous, everybody was for it, and now they're against, you know, it's just not the way things, hey, how are you? Oh, I have no idea, you'll have to get with, you'll have, you'll have to get with Debbie or somebody, I, nah, Debbie would be the one, but- Uh, we gotta close session.
Hi, how are you? Yes, I ca- I can't call names, but I, the land, that's what I can call faces. Hey, Dan and-
Now, we got another thirty-five acres.
We did, we did, pretty much, I mean, we're a little heavier, we're a little more wrinkled and all that, so. Well, it's, it's, it's good, good to see you, thanks for, thank you for speaking. Yeah, 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 well, uh, you know, we, we can't answer all those questions, 'cause all those questions are a part of the process, you know what I'm saying? I mean, we'll do this impact study, and they'll tell us what we can't do and what we can do, and, and that'll change, change it.
Nah, we, we gotta-
Yes, yes.
Well, this meeting's not over, so we need to move forward with the next agenda items? Uh, huh? March, okay.
I, I think so.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, I'll keep it right. Thank you, thank you, honey, yeah.
Well, let me tell you something, I think I got old timers, so don't ask me when something happened, if it wasn't yesterday, yeah. Thank you, alright. Alright, let's move on and, uh, finish this meeting. Alright, so I'm sure this one won't take long, it's rezoning, uh, uh, thirty-five point two-seven acres from RS and RA two to CR, same zoning, different piece of property.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we, we did have a request by the Davison County Board of Commissioners to rezone property located in Boone Township, tax maps twenty-six, thirty-two, thirty-two B, thirty-two D, lots thirteen B, nineteen, twelve A, twenty-two, one, eighteen, one, and two, containing thirty-five point two-seven acres more or less. Said property is located on the north side of Wilcox Way, approximately five tenths of a mile southwest of the Sowers Road intersection. Said property is further located on the southeast side of Trading Ford Way, approximately point five-five miles south of the Sowers Road intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RS, Low Intensity Residential District, and RA two, Rural Agricultural District, to that of CR, Community Recreational District. Bear with me, please, while I flip through, had my posting signs on here just to show that everything was in place legally, bear with me while I flip through all this. Alright, if you please divert your attention to the overhead, um, Yadkin River Park, already existing, in place, with, with, there's a few more amenities that, that we hope to get located here, but Wilcox Bridge, I eighty-five as it crosses the Yadkin River, Trading Ford Way. Um, currently, we have a, a nineteen twenty-six spandrel arch bridge, historical asset that's within the park, it's a, it's a pedestrian walking bridge, bicycling, got a dog park, we've got playground facilities, we have a, an eighteen sixty-four, eighteen sixty-five earthwork fort with walking trails. So, this, this facility's more of a passive recreational amenity than it is for, than active, which was what we heard with the other one. Um, I will, um, that's all I'll, as an introduction, that's all I'll introduce right now.
I'm gonna declare this public hearing open, but I don't know that there's any reason, 'cause there's nobody here, but it looks like since the last one denied, I don't see how this one can pass, okay? That's just my thought process.
Okay.
But, uh, anyhow, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak in favor or against? It appears to be in no one, so I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Any questions by the board? No questions for staff? Staff, uh, what's y'all's recommendations?
Uh, we're, we're, we're gonna recommend approval of the request, um, this park is ninety-five percent complete, uh, as alluded to earlier, the, uh, commissioners have already invested over thirteen million dollars in the existing park system, making improvements all over the county, you got splash pads, you've got new facilities at Hughes, you've got new, this, this is a brand-new park, Boone's Cave has been improved. Uh, this is all part of the quality of life effort that the, uh, the money has gone towards. Um, again, the comprehensive plan promotes orderly growth, this, this effort, uh, began in twenty-ten, um, with the Wilcox Bridge and DOT handing that over the past ten to fifteen years. Too many, too numerous amenities have been added to this, uh, park, and, and it's, it's been a huge success with respect to the amount of people that, that come out there to this facility now. Um, this, this, um, the facility does not have as an intense athletic component, just having walking trails and river access for kayaking and canoeing. Near in completion is the one point six million dollar environmental center, this facility will house a museum, teaching area, kayak and canoe rental, as well as small convenience stores for drinks and small snacks. Due to this fact, staff would contend this facility is a park, housing historical sites as well as a passive recreational amenity. Um, approximately seven hundred thousand people visit this park annually, uh, and has, has become a destination for river lovers, passive recreationalist, dog lovers, and historians. Staff would contend this represents change for change of conditions in the area, making the zoning request compliant with Article seven, Administration, Section seven-ten. Um, and his land development plan, uh, statements one, one, one-three, one-four, one-five, one-eight, one-sixteen, one-twenty-one, seven-one, seven-four, nine-one, eleven-one, eleven-two, eleven-three, twelve-one, twelve-two, twelve-four, uh, twelve-five, and seventeen-one support the request, and we'd ask you to support the amendment request and adopt a statement of consistency.
Alright, now we've heard staff recommendation, do I have a motion?
I have a motion that we approve this request, this is a facility that's already in operation, already put nothing commercial business.
Thank you.
I'm okay now, no.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Huh? A no, I mean, uh, nothing is a yes, so I might as well go yes, but, yeah, I just figured it wouldn't pass because it's the same thing for all of me, huh, yeah.
Different.
Alright.
That's all I have.
Do you want to go in front of session?
Yep. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Yep.[1008.63]